Ah, yeah, huh, I hear myself. Uh... Hello? Why do you do this? Voice mod! Hi! Um, yeah! So, turns out, uh, voice mod must have crashed at some point while my computer was on. Uh... And, uh, went a little nuts. But... Yeah, uh, hi! Today, we're basically, okay, because we want to be a productive member of the raid group, we are studying the mechanics for tonight's fight. For those of you who don't know what we're doing, uh, every Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday is raid night with our raid group. Our raid group is currently going after one of the hardest fights in Final Fantasy XIV, known as P12X, uh, P12S. That is short for the Pandemonium Raid Series, the 12th or final fight, and savage difficulty, which is the hardest difficulty that the fight comes in. This fight has many interesting and complex mechanics that need to be done correctly, and is a two-phase fight with a break in the middle. So... We are studying to ensure that we do this as best as we can. Obviously, there are going to be some things that we won't get right until we're in the thick of it, and we have to beat ourselves against it over and over and over again, but the more that we come into with knowledge of this, the better. We're done with part one, we know part one, we're going to dig into part two and try to make sure everything's good. So, hi! Don't worry, actually, wait a minute, I wonder if I can do... I can change, mm, hold up. Can I make this an album now? Because I have, it says image slideshow, will this work? I'm gonna say food, and I'm gonna say... Add directory, desktop, food. Select... Okay. I think we're good. There's just grapes and a chicken sandwich behind me, because it doesn't recognize... Okay, so I asked my Discord to get a bunch of GIFs of food spinning to put in front of where chat would be in XIV. And I only got two that I can work with, because all of them have transparent backgrounds. So I need ones with white backgrounds, but okay. Alright, we're gonna... We're gonna stop the music, and we're going to watch the raid video. This is a general guide put out by Hector Hectorson. I had the Hector Guide to P12S. We need shittier GIFs. No, I want high-quality, like a rip, man, high-quality rips! Anyway, um, yeah, so... Here is what we're going to be looking at. This is the second part of the fight. The boss splits the arena into this smaller version of the arena we see in part one. Because we go to part one, we have a much bigger space to work with when we fight this, you know, woman, but we're done with this part. This part is done. We're gamers, we're on to part two. She's a big tentacle woman now, which, I mean, that's fine by most of standards, but we need to kill her. We've done UAV one, we've done Classical Concepts one, we do Caloric Theory one with a reliable... You know, we get through it pretty reliably. So... It seems like it's working pretty good. We just need to see caloric more. Alright, so... For those of you who want context as to what all of this is, basically, these fights, we have to constantly be doing our damage, running through, doing our proper rotation, all that stuff, because the damage threshold is incredibly tight. Um, if you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing when it comes to hurting the boss, you die, because it has an eventual enrage point. The fight is a set amount of time, and it's not like it's just gonna loop through the same three things over again ten times. It is a completely unique fight for the eight minutes that the fight is happening. She repeats things, but always does something different. So this is another unique mechanic. We've seen this before, though. She's going to create these proximity markers at various points around the arena, and she's gonna shoot a laser, it's gonna blow up here, come over here, blow up here, come over here, blow over here, and basically blow up along the arena. The party needs to split up over here and over here in half. I'm on the party that will be on the right. So... There's also an explosion that you have to get away from the middle on, that's what that is. The party, while the explosions in the line are happening, when the explosions in the line are in the middle, the party has to separate out, because each party member is going to explode, and if they overlap, they kill each other! Which is horrible. Then they have to go back onto a safe spot in the wall, which is going to be the spot where the lines originally started from, because they're every other. Now, sometimes they'll do patterns like this bullshit right here, where they'll go zigzag across the arena, but the way we're breaking this down means that we should be able to, no matter how this works out, always get to the right spot and survive the mechanic. This is a very easy mechanic when broken down correctly. The next thing is pregnancy. Uh, pregnancy is gonna be the thing that hurts. So she's going to cast a DNA spell on everybody. Everybody either gets zero, one, or two. And we line up, basically, you know that line you did in like kindergarten to grade five where you picked your teams, everyone stood in a line and, you know, you know, "I want Billy, I want Johnny," that sort of thing? Everybody is gonna get their debuff, and we stand in this line to basically figure out who got what debuff and moved to the spots we need to. So... In this situation, we can see that there are some DNA markers that have twos, some that have twos and, uh, different like shades of man. So there's two white, two red, uh, two dark, and then there's ones, and then there's people who didn't get any. Basically, the people who didn't get any walk forward, so they know, you know, who didn't get nothing. And this is just explaining the mechanic, so we'll, we'll go to an actual like presentation on how it works. So everybody gets their markers. The people who don't get their markers walk forward, they're gonna go to the towers, these far towers on the far left, far right. The people who got ones are going to walk backwards, because they wanna know what side they're going to be on, I believe. And we basically have to line up like this at the top, when it all comes down to it. The zeros and the short peop- the people with twos that are short have to go to the outside, because the twos are going to have a debuff that is either long or short, and you'll see it here. You'll see the sixteen or the twenty. Okay? So, the people who get two, you have to look and see whether you've got a sixteen or a twenty, whether you've got the long or the short. So, if we follow this, then this tank goes to this tower, this ranged goes to this tower. Short, uh, so you are a long, so you'll be down here. You are H1, you have a short, you will be over here, because you wanna go to your opposite tower. You are a short, you wanna go to your opposite color tower, because we take these with opposite colors. Um, one here is going to go over to the bottom, one here, go to the here. And basically, the way we wanna work this out, R2 would go over here, two long two, so... Yeah, zero forwards, one's back, everybody figures themselves out, the pathosis figure out what's going on there. The shorts go to the opposite element, and the long and the ones go to the bottom side. If everything is worked out, which it should, they should be able to eat the second towers, which is fine, that's what we want, and then... What'll happen is the debuffs will cross, so the person who is white at the bottom will go to the north, and the person who is dark will go to the white, and vice versa on the other side. Every time this happens, it's going to spawn a slime, and we also need to stand together to get rid of a debuff that will kill us. These slimes are going to target everybody, and if they do, everyone dies. So we have to be aware of the tethers that they spawn, and basically, the people who were initially the zeros on the far left and far right have to eat all of these tethers, so they have to gain the attention of all these slimes that drop down, and then take them to very specific positions, one being right here and one being over here. Uh, actually, is it right in the middle? No, it's light, right under the line here, because what, they are going to explode. These three slimes and these three slimes are gonna basically jump on these guys and hurt them a lot, but that's fine. At the same time, she's going to cut the arena in half and just, you know, kill everybody. So that's, uh, gonna be interesting, so whoever goes to the north has to hop on the left side. You know, suffer. And that's the mechanic. It's a lot going on, but we can break it down. This bit is not difficult. Take these tethers, take them to specific spots, that's if you were a zero. So the role of the zero in this situation is stand on the edge and just stay on the north. And then when you get a co- you know, when it's your time with an element, you swap, and then you take the tethers. Zeros have the most action. If you're a one, you hit underneath, if you're the short two, you go with... You go with your side, and if you're the long two, you go at the bottom. Like, there is this right here, which just tells you where everyone's positions are. It makes it very easy to figure out. It, it is a lot going on in a very short period of time. It sucks, but we can get it. And then there's Classical Concepts 2, where, if you remember Classical Concepts 1, because it's a whole lot of fuck, basically, they're gonna get PlayStation markers on the arena. Everybody has to go to their respective PlayStation Arena markers with their buddies and eat their shapes. It is ridiculous, but this one is an asshole, because in the middle of setting everything off, she's gonna flip the whole goddamn arena 180. And it's not like a mirror image, nah, she rotate. She rotates the arena like that, and everyone has to adjust to where the shapes will be at the end of it, or else you will die. So everyone has to get to where their shapes will rotate. The thing is, you always just look to the middle and walk straight across, and you'll end up where you need to be. It's a ridiculous thing, but you'll get from A to B, and you'll get to where you need to be. Okay, so, yeah, these go off, and then we have to bait the tentacles, which come down. And then we have to do, yeah, at the same time tentacles come down, the shapes explode. So... You know, it's just another thing, there's a crush helm, that's fine, and then caloric theory. Caloric theory. So this one, everyone's gonna have their spot. I'm the middle, apparently. And basically, what's gonna happen is, somebody's gonna get an infection, and they have to, they have to become a super-spreader. And the person with the infection goes in the middle and swaps with whoever's in the middle. Everyone explodes, and then somebody becomes hot. That hot person basically has to take that heat and spread it to someone else without setting off the entire goddamn chain of issues. And then that person has to spread it to the next person, one by one, around the whole goddamn arena. So, the way it'll work is, person one explodes, that's fine. Then they walk over, give it to this guy, they pass the hotness on. Person two is going to explode, they have to walk out of there with their hotness. So... They get out of the hot zone. Person three, person four. Person five. And the person in the middle does absolutely nothing. It is a pain in the ass. And then finally, she ends it with another UAV segment, where she's gonna give us this top-down view. She's gonna do a summon darkness. This isn't that bad, because we just have to figure out where we stand, because she's gonna rotate the arena while this is going off. We just have to figure out where the safe spot's going to be, while she's rotating her like slide laser. Yeah, she's gonna either do horizontal or vertical here, so we just kinda have to adjust to where it will be, spread out. This is going to suck. They have to stretch to the other side, and then the other person has to tank the laser for them. Yeah. Hot! You ever wanna get crushed by tentacles, just hit and rage! Alright. Let's join the server and get ready, it's time. And don't worry about that, don't worry about what you just saw.
Abby, I have leaked footage of caloric, uh, two, to send you.
I can't believe you leaked.
You have no idea how funny that context, that word is in this context. Behold, this is caloric two. You have to juggle a fireball around, how does it make you feel?
Uh...
What you're telling me is you understand caloric two.
Yeah, which means...
I'mma hold each other.
You, you know what we're doing with caloric two then, right?
Nope.
How do you know it's caloric two?
I still, I was making a joke around the picture I sent.
Yeah, but what does that have to do with caloric two?
Just because there's fire involved.
There's fire in a lot of campaigns you've been to.
Don't read into it too much.
Too bad!
That's, I thought that was the joke.
My stew is very good.
Pickles?
No. The dish.
Mmm. What's it made out of?
One second.
Wow!
Uh, chicken broth as the base. Tatcha mozzarella cheese, cilantro, rice, salt and pepper.
I can't believe all that makes food. I thought it made a fancy coat.
Oh yeah, you'll be happy to know, Abra, it did work. Um, I'm just gonna wait for it to cool down before I brush off, um, the ash and charcoal, but the steel wool after, you know, the stone heated up, good wonders.
That's good!
Hi, Cap.
Okay! Hmm. So, are we gonna be doing, um... Practice, or are we gonna just dive in and see if we can get our two hours?
It's a great question.
That's a good question, Mega Man. That's a good question, Mega Man.
Actually, let's drag your timer in. The raid was like now.
It's almost seven, yeah. So I will say, for those of you guys watching the stream for the first time, I'm not gonna talk a lot during raid. I can explain things as best I can. I'm gonna do the best I can to be a good streamer, but a lot of this is just a way for us to show our progress and a good way to have logs of what happened without, you know, recording everything. Just let the internet do it. Plus, a lot of people are interested in watching this, so, you know, it's not gonna be as big a night as a normal stream would be. Um, we're probably gonna do our three hours and that's gonna be it. But yeah, uh, tomorrow will be our Pathfinder game and we'll do cart night or something afterward. I don't know what. We'll figure it out. But yeah, should be fun. Yeah. 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 Like, yeah. Yeah, with a tilde. Hmm, ah, this might be something that might get clipped. Eh, give me a second, I gotta wash the throat out. Yeah. Alright, I hope you're happy, internet. Oh, I hear a little man. Hello, little man. What's up? Send the little man.
Hello, I am back, kind of.
Welcome back, kind of.
Are we still waiting on prior? I'll be right back then.
That's fine. V-very happy. Ah, I see. Hey, what's up? Oh, yeah, cat cam. Alright. You good? Yeah, somebody wanted attention. Such a well-behaved little man, aren't ya? Uh huh. Such a good boy. Such a good boy. Alright, goodbye. Alright. Get the wave of invites out again.
Oh, could you re-inv- uh, re- send the invite?
Yeah. It's fine. There was garvey petting happening. Alright, let's watch the clip. Side effect got very happy. Ah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was pretty good. I have to admit.
My one purpose.
I mean, you heal pretty good, too.
You can't prove that. Hey, you know, Nathan hasn't just healed everything.
Oh?
No, that was last year.
Alright. So what's the game plan? Are we gonna hop into, uh, school for a bit? Are we gonna dive in and see if we can get there?
Well, the problem is the next mechanic doesn't have school. It's, did you study beforehand?
Yeah. How many people studied? Pop quiz. Who stands on the outside when it comes to, like, your DNA markers? Who gets like the first hour? It was zero and short two.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, the part that's gonna suck is when it does like the half-room cleave right after everyone, uh, the people have to bait the, uh, slimes. That is gonna catch people.
Mm-hmm, shouldn't, because I should always be on the right side.
They should have the Buster muscle memory in by now.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's just making sure you, you take it on the appropriate side and then, then once that explosion happens, you get your ass back on the left side. What happens if Ronan is the one who has to take those slimes?
I do.
Then he switches sides.
No, I, they on one. I didn't tell everyone else to put. There won't be enough time.
So everyone just has to go right side?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, make sure you call it out then.
To just be on the side the tank isn't.
Yeah.
I'll definitely be screaming at everybody whenever that event happens.
As long as it's not during a two-minute window, it shouldn't be that bad.
I mean, I will still yell anyways.
True.
And the thing is, you'll have plenty of... Fuck, stupid armor event.
DPNT die.
Maybe I can click through this fast enough.
Doubt it.
If you need a moment, just hit the withdrawal button.
Hi.
The queues are free.
I'm back.
It's not like we're going in with like a rando, we're gonna get punished. You can withdraw if you need a moment to get, you know, food.
On time, I wanna rate.
True.
Hey, are we having it early or something tonight?
No.
Okay.
Oh, well, someone else didn't hit accept, so.
I am back and I hit accept.
Alright, I'll hit it again then.
Still more to this cutscene? No.
Well, it looks like you'll have to start the cutscene all over again.
I expected as much.
I'm speed eating my soup right now.
Speed soup.
Spout, if you will.
Ooh.
I made a really good soup. Oh, water, shit.
Do you need a moment?
I'm two feet from my sink, Abby.
Most people were, huh?
No, no. But I've explained multiple times before that I'm two feet from the sink.
Let's go. It's an involuntary reaction. Eat your food.
I am, it's called soup.
Alright, getting the Honda Odyssey.
I'm still making our pots, by the way. Just in case you had a, I had that.
That's fine.
I had to go into work today.
For tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. Flip.
Yay.
Are you going in?
So every fight, at the end of, or every tier, at the end of their, uh, tier, the songs have lyrics. And this one is a combination of last tier's lyrics as well as lyrics for this tier. This is from P4. This is from 2, I believe. Or 8. Out and buddies?
Gonna be out first. That was way too many people.
Oh, that's a lot of people there. I got new. I think white laser didn't swap.
Nope, white laser was on the right side.
Not sure, why three people just drop dead then? Everybody have a clip?
I'm streaming, so... If we need to review, we can. Mm-hmm. Oh, this is from, uh, P4. Chaos. We spread the monials. Your be lions, follow me. Early. Okay, so a lot of things are happening. Um, I'm pre-casting my damage reduction so it can hit the first raid wide, but it needs to have that awkward pre-timing because then it lines itself up to be able to be reused right at this point here, that last raid wide that just hit. Um, it basically lines itself up for the rest of the fight by casting it early there.
Counter.
Oh, fuck. That's on me, sorry.
We're good. I got some.
This is true, eh?
Yes.
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 Trouble. Good catch, Somar.
Yeah, good soup.
Thanks.
We might wanna reset now, though.
Do you want to reset?
I don't think we can clear, but, you know.
I'd like to try some more.
Not so dice, but.
Light towers. Did I get in?
We're not dead.
My booty hole clinched.
Okay, we're left.
Someone's just trying to test me, but I passed. It's the Alec awake mechanic.
Two-minute window?
Quick one-two.
Is that quick one-two?
Yes.
That's the last laser.
And I'm north. Pot re opener will be this afternoon.
If we can all be alive for the pot re opener, we might be able to make up.
Well, that's strive.
It's gonna be close. Your turn.
Yay.
Oh, not bad.
Yep.
Maybe we'll call them?
What? Nope, nobody called it wrong. Somebody got clipped by.
That just looked like an overlap.
Mm-hmm.
I got hit by two. Could've sworn I saw her freeze the entire right-hand side.
Nope.
Did not, though.
Yeah, it was definitely.
It started bottom left.
Make sure they have its top, right? Like, it wasn't health.
I didn't see.
Early. Wait for it. In Buddies. Two-minute window.
Will be in first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In.
Light towers. Shit, two people died.
No, I died and.
We, we lost a tower person, we couldn't get it.
I'm looking, Pyro ran way too early during 2A and just got clipped by multiple.
So did he get clipped by two?
You ran way too early.
Only thing I can assume. By the time the lasers went off, you were up by Skishy and I. And you just went from yes to no.
Oh, they were already fucking off whenever I moved.
No, they were not.
If the, if his partner didn't take damage, then that would make sense. And he just took like a whole laser solo. That's fine. When Zora is good, we'll be going again.
Okay, yeah, no slowing the clip down, I see it. It's that he walked forward and so the stack targeted him and it missed that completely.
Probably just funny snapshot things. I saw something just completely.
I'm a safe.
Still one Zora, I think.
Yep.
If you can move, make sure you move.
Oh yeah, do a wee wiggle.
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, we're not on part two. Should we requeue when we get back then? Twenty minutes is twenty minutes.
Zora is back.
Yeah, you're fine. Let's go.
Whenever you're ready, Polpo.
Yay.
It's yay.
Bike lane. What's up?
I'll talk about later.
Here we go.
In Buddies. Block.
Two-minute window.
Out first. Late.
Wait for it. Away.
Light tower.
Two-minute window.
Yeah, I know.
Father number, higher number goes.
I know, I was trying to.
Wait, did I step in too soon? Because I, I split the lasers. I thought I took the third step, but I might've taken the second.
No, I stepped in a little too close.
No, I stepped in a little too close because I was trying to adjust because I just noticed Alec was a little slow.
Yeah, you took yours, but I didn't.
Maybe I moved too quick, too fast, and didn't wait for lag and all that shit.
What was that, Nathan?
You took yours, I didn't get to take mine because like Ronan said, someone else I think was too far in, even further than me.
Well, again, I was just trying to adjust and I just walked a little too far in and wasn't thinking because I got distracted.
No movement. Yay!
In buddies.
Two-minute window.
Block. In first. Sorry about that, bro. Through. Late.
Dark tower. I was the idiot.
Don't tell yourself like that, you're just gonna play worse.
Take a breath, it's gonna be alright. Minor mistake, we can fix it. Oh, wait, yeah.
Yeah, Zora like just had something in the chat.
In that case, I'd say I'd take five and re-instance, yeah.
Yeah. Natty, I don't know if you want to pull the dough out now during this moment.
Uh, yeah, I'm going to.
Okay.
Pizza.
Alright. I'm gonna slip away and use my bathroom real quick as well. Fuck it, just knock my controller down. See if I can actually get through this damn cutscene. Alright. Hi, I'm back. Is anyone still out?
As far as we know, keyboard issue is still being worked on.
Okay. Hit auto.
I'm ready, I'm just in that fucking cutscene, so just do it if I'm the only one who hasn't.
I feel that on a spiritual level, Zora.
I think I had a nightmare about that at some point. Like I'm playing 14 with a different keyboard and all my fingers just mash the wrong buttons.
If I ever had to play on a laptop, I think I'd just like end myself.
Looks at Nathan, aren't you using a different keyboard right now from what you're used to?
Well, yeah.
What?
Huh?
What about me?
I said, are you using a different keyboard from what you're used to?
Technically, but it doesn't change my performance, why? Oh, that reminds me, Lim. You know how your, you know how this other keyboard doesn't have a problem with W shift 2? It does have a problem with D shift 2.
Okay, cool. Interesting.
Oh wait, hang on, I'm on D. It's, hang on, this, uh...
Wait. You're pressing shift?
Oh, no, there we go, it's SD shift 2, that's what this keyboard has a problem with. It actually refuses to accept more than, you know, four or more inputs, so I can't move diagonally and shield people, which has been an issue occasionally.
Don't ever look at my keyboard.
In the tiny world.
Scared your camera 45 degrees?
No, I know, it's just impulsively, I'm used to just going diagonally and it's like, oh, interesting.
Yeah, I get that. Diagonal method.
Actually, wait, it has no problem doing WA shift 2. Or WD shift 2, it's only the ones that involve S.
Ah, excuse me. Ah, my keyboard can't either. Wait, 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 what the fuck?
Interesting.
Wait, 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 what the fuck? I, I, I can't do... I can't do SD shift 3, but I can do SD shift 4.
Interesting.
Hmm.
Self-destruct.
All these combinations on my keyboard and I just potted. That's why I don't have my pot bound.
Interesting.
This keyboard has a dedicated sleep button and it's giving me anxiety. Oh no! Are we good to join?
Uh, Pyro was, uh...
Okay.
Still here.
Oh, you did not ready, um, so I didn't know if you were taking a moment for yourself.
Yeah, if, if it was just Pyro and me obviously who didn't accept any Q and A.
Geez, why is it that all the old hairstyles are better than the new ones?
Do they?
Yeah, like, when you move, the old ones actually like move and flutter and wiggle, like, the new ones are all completely static.
I was just talking to somebody about this before raid, and you were absolutely right.
New hair full of gel. Old hair. Free.
Motion intense hair there is, like Abra, when you like run back and forth, like, your hair's not gonna flow behind you, it just wiggles a little bit. Uh, I'm gonna do this really quick before, uh, bad things happen.
Yeah, it's like they got lazy with the bones in my hair. 3D model bones.
I think the one that I'm using is an older hairstyle. I hate to switch, fuck off.
Oh, uh, we should probably hit the...
Oh, usually someone does, I stop doing it.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Suffer.
Also, Zora, I like your frog. That Abi is what made me giggle.
Gotta bring back the elephant hat macro from the start of the Xpack.
Oh, yeah. Macro? Was it double tap?
Oh, it depended on the class.
Oh, okay. Yay.
Orient yourself to die.
There's no need to.
Where are you hiding?
No people need to turn around.
Fuck off, mate. Wow. Aren't Zora mad? That's the only thing you know about me. Doesn't that you're strikingly handsome? Man, I'm good.
Me? Gone Gaga.
Out buddies.
Two-minute window.
Counter. Can be out first. No. Rest in pasta.
Looks like red laser, getting taken.
I didn't fuck up this time, I put it close. I almost did as well, I went clockwise and then blinked back so I could shoot the laser. The white laser.
From what I saw, it looked like it went down the middle, it could have theoretically just missed someone. But you're the one that takes the tower, nevermind. Even if it did that, didn't matter.
Yeah, and I was white.
Unless there's a situation where you can have two, yeah, but we didn't have that. Yeah. Yeah, that's not happening.
Light. Hi, everybody. Whoa.
In spread. Block.
Two-minute window.
To be in first. It's true.
Late.
Something like late dodge, sure, yeah.
Oh, no, sorry, fuck.
I love you beer, but please.
Oh shit.
Out.
Out, out, out.
Out, out, out. Two-minute window.
Quick, 2, 3.
I'm a Frencher. We're done. Bonus healing's out.
Fucking row feet. It was on height. Send this bitch to Brazil.
We're still at a bit of a deficit, big focus.
Got it.
Art north. All the way through. Late dodge. Buddies.
Two-minute window with pots. In, 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 in. Raid wide.
We really need nothing to go wrong through this last, last part, so huge focus.
If nothing does, I'll just immediately L V. And it's safe.
You can do it anytime you want now.
Right now?
Oh, uh, you know, get to the safe spot, but yeah.
I'm not gonna risk it now.
It's gonna be full spread. Get between the ads afterwards. Between the ads, between the ads. Spread is north, spread is north. Out, 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 out. Hard platform.
L V anytime.
Close, but...
Communion? Communion, yes!
Oh my god! Fucking gaming!
I think that was our first completely clean 2 B each, so good job.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah? How the f- Yeah, that's a really good run that time.
It was a collective effort.
Ronan killed me!
No, you were really, really fucking far away from like our actual like clock spot there.
I was like a foot away.
I believe that is our second time we've, uh...
It's okay, it's okay.
It, it, it's a group effort, Alec. You just both need to use your eyes and make sure you're on top of each other.
Yeah.
I've had to learn that, right? I've had to learn that lesson really hard with Skishy.
I, I kinda, I kinda have been doing that with Ronan, like, I'm in the midst of-
I'm literally lining up the frickin' health bars.
I'm in the midst of me doing in shroud during there, so I can't really look. But I've looked at the last set, I'm like, well, fuck, okay.
I've just, I assume too much and just, it, it, it kills people, so I just use eyes.
I did tower homework. I did tower homework. I did the simulator for the-
Let's get there.
For the shapes.
Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna do this.
You smell like fish.
We're in combat, we can't do it.
Do we have, do we have the thingy?
Uh, what thingy?
Go frog friend.
Worked out for, for fucking exiflers?
Great question.
Oh.
Could've sworn you were- Uh, what did we need to work out for exiflers?
Oh, for melee's close. I totally believe the last time we were there. No, just the healing, because it's a lot. We, we cleared over last time.
Uh, I should be able to use Heart of Light there.
Okay, I have both my mitts open.
Uh, I bet I was using neutral, I believe, when I should line back.
So the boss literally was about to go into enrage. Like, there was literally no wiggle room and we somehow got that. So we got to phase 2. This is a checkpoint, as you saw.
I believe that is all that I was capable of doing without changing other things previous. Okay, we'll see how that goes.
I think I had a reprisal on it last.
God damn!
I'm gonna assume we have carry call on this one. On what right now?
Do we wanna do Caloric?
Uh, the exifler.
Spots.
Uh, yeah, we should.
The spread.
Uh, what do you mean, Caloric spots?
I mean, the potato spots, yeah. What is it? It's like this.
The ones that are in the raid resource right now? We should still have that, if that's what-
Oh, wait, we have them?
Yeah, they're, they're, uh...
Oh, you put, oh, okay, okay, okay. Nevermind.
We, we took that picture the first time we lined up, so we can just refer it around. Uh, I think, I think Skishy was trying to do the queues, but that, those, those, both the queues and the lineup are in the middle.
I see, I see. Now I didn't know it was there.
I was gonna say, isn't that most of the lineup for towers?
I, I just kind of threw the queue, uh, spread together based on what I've seen other groups do and like typical lineup. If anyone has any objections, we can swap it.
I don't give a shit.
I mean, if anybody on my side suffers, I can give him the braindead spot, but it shouldn't matter too much.
Yeah.
And this is for Caloric 2, right?
Yeah, it's for Caloric 2.
We're talking about like two things, but yeah.
But, cause this is also our lineup for, uh, towers, isn't it?
No, Caloric 2, it has to be different. It is a Q. It is the letter Q shape with a dot in the middle.
It's the first post on August 7th.
If you're wondering, you are, uh, above me. You are-
Oh, okay.
You are two increments above me for the grid pattern. This is the thing I asked last night for people to specifically figure out and try to memorize. Because literally the hardest part of Caloric 2 is just gonna be making sure you start in the right spot.
Okay.
And not moving. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not moving has been proving hard on Caloric 1, so let's keep it up.
With R1 in this picture, tech, is being the center, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. Okay. I will do my best, as best-
R1 would be, uh, just above C, I believe? Uh, I, I- I think that's how the grid pattern goes.
We will see.
And if you end up being center, it passes where the fuck first? Is it healer 2?
Uh, if we, we swap, so the fire goes in the center and then the person that starts with the actual spread one should never-
Okay, 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 okay. Okay, okay, nevermind, I was-
That's gonna be the other important part, to like really be able to pre-position and be in your spot ahead of time, because we swap to put the fire center. So Abra's gonna be swapping with whoever gets the fire, so I mean, he doesn't get it. So if you don't start on your spread spot, you are putting the onus on Abra to know where your spread spot is. And while eventually he can probably get there, right away, that's not his job.
The good news is-
Yeah.
The good news is, is like during Caloric 1, you can look and see where you'd need to be, like, but not be there.
And that's good. Uh-
What's up?
Oh, Nathan? I'm eating food, that's what's up. Power ranger moment.
Uh, I think there's a point I should reject, the middle of the spread.
Hey, I got a late card.
Directly between D and B, same as like the core.
Oh yeah, don't you want late card on Sam?
Nah, I miss a slow Sam, yeah.
I don't have collective.
It's okay, we'll get reprisal, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
Right? There it is.
I'm helping you.
Skishy, turn time.
Numa, 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 yay.
Don't forget sprint, Skishy.
North south.
BPS south. Donut.
Shapes won. Bee pog Arby's. Two-minute window.
Sorry.
Woo! Hot potato.
Way to play limbo, Abby.
I'm a gamer. It made it a little tight on the north.
Caloric 1 coming up. Port. BPS. After this, wind is gonna go out and then north and south are gonna rotate. And it should be good. Remember to stay still after a while. Done, well done.
I accidentally tested if you can walk into the tomb marker.
Exiflers.
Remember melee front if it's north south.
Peace bless. Oops, wrong one.
Raid wide, raid wide, heal, save yourselves, save yourselves.
I have nothing. Yeah.
Uh, Nathan went down on our side. Yeah, that, 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 it should've been fine.
Well-
Hey, look, it's the mechanic.
Hey, you can do it, you guys, I believe!
Three?
I got, I got tripped up. You, you doubting yourself, man, you doubt-
Yeah, yeah, no, my bad, my bad.
Oh, good.
So I, I'm actually curious, even if Nathan was up, do you think it would've been 100% fine? Cause if not, I would suggest potentially-
I was supposed to hold neutral and I didn't.
Yeah, we didn't have healing.
Okay, well, yeah, I was gonna suggest, like, cause, um, my suggestion was like, I could... Well, no, I don't think it would really matter if we did it that way or not.
What happened to the other side? Uh, who went down on your side? Our side was almost fine. I think three people survived, one didn't.
Yeah, me, me and Ronan did.
Yeah, I know, I saw one person died.
I think it might've been to a-
Okay, well, okay, um, I guess the other thing good to consider is, uh, if it's north-south, the north is gonna have healers, so we still have to be a little more conscious.
I mean, I'm using bloodbath there. I think the healers should be fine.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm also using-
Save their stuff.
Oh, Ronan.
Uh, aren't you the one that died, Alec?
Uh, I died because I was at half health. Uh, and that was, no, I didn't die till the, oh, the ultimate raid wide after.
Okay.
Ronan?
I'm... Uh, actually, yeah, you're right. You can go ahead and check that.
Yeah.
Hey, Ronan, if we need further healing there, could I have you nasen, nah, nasen glint me?
Uh, I would hit someone else before you probably. I would hit Pyro probably. But yeah, I, I will do, do the rest to look.
I'm standing over here. Alright. Trying to test healing ranges.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if you're using chit there, you're probably best off doing it after the flares go off, because it has a 30, so it should hit everybody.
You should be able to-
Heal and the ward.
It should be about, I don't, it should be about here, Nathan.
So, I was gonna say, like, so- Nope, still missing him.
Wow, okay.
Wow. Okay.
Wow, that'll get right there, right there, right there.
About three quarters of a platform, something, something like that.
Shake, it's, yeah, shake is fucking huge.
Yeah, so, but if you stand here-
I can probably just use paps as, as, as.
Yeah, like if I'm standing here, you can... If you're, if you're here, like at the center of this eye, you'll get me at the edge no matter what.
Actually, I'm using prognosis, so double that range and it should be fine. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to consider my, uh, 30 on ones, that's all. It shouldn't matter how large shake is, cause you would just throw it while we're standing in the middle right before, seeing if we're going east-west or north-south.
Yeah, that was my plan. She just suggested doing it after.
But the point is, if you do it after, you get the heal as well, so you get an extra 40.
You get the heal for-
You get the heal on there, what?
But, but also you get the heal regardless. Okay, okay. But you get the heal regardless, because part of the damage was the Echpyroses damage, cause that does damage as well.
Oh, so the regent's only like 100, isn't it?
It's actually, I don't have that.
Is it 100 or 200, Ronan?
It's just healing.
Yeah, the healing is, that's healing you didn't get last time. Oh, it's fine. I should be able to hit everybody. But, uh, the Echpyroses cast itself also does damage, uh, which I found out once I got over by the exiflers. It's like, wow, we just took a lot of damage, hmm. And like the AoE, the like spreads didn't even go off, it's like, hmm.
I don't have a phone top for anything during that either, cause I'm using it on-
Let's try again.
Uh, yeah, we should, if, yeah, just use shake. Let's make sure Nathan doesn't go down. It should be good.
Uh, Skishy.
I should hold neutral and not using dur- during Caloric, cause we really don't use during Caloric, but I used them some days.
Skishy, can I have you faint the ultima that comes after the exiflers?
Uh, I think I can get it. I'll let you know.
Cause I'm four seconds off from getting mine in. If I can't, if you can't, it's, I, I will just figure something out. We can look at mitt later. Cause we pretty much got everything else down. Among us.
Like, I don't think it's up there, but it might be.
That's okay. Let, just let me know around at the time.
We, we, we shouldn't need it. We were a healer down and we were missing neutral. It should be okay.
There, but just fainting the raid wides in general is, has been doing well. I'm just trying to stick to what I've been doing.
Appreciate it. Everyone just needs to crit really, really hard. Stand on the tank cluster for some kanki, but I know I can't.
I mean, you technically could, for certain.
I mean, we tried, took-
Oh my god, you're scaring me.
It's fine.
It's Ronan, it's never fine.
It was completely fine.
Wait, if Limb covers me and I get hit, do I get the kanki?
Cover!
I should play a Paladin.
I feel like Limb would end it all if I had-
I feel like Limb would cry.
I thought Paladin was pretty fun though.
I mean, it's fun.
I say refocus, refocus.
Okay, I have-
BPS south, please.
BPS south, brava, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I could hear the blood vessel popping in your head when Skishy said that. Yeah, north-south. My brain like fucking-
So this mechanic, you have to watch where the tentacles grab the arena, or else you just die.
Yeah, I need to, I think it's like, if you can't figure out what it is, it's north-south, I think is what one guy said.
Yeah.
I just think of it like, how's she gonna roll it?
I just never see it too many times, usually if it's, uh, north-south.
Two-minute window.
I didn't cleave the arena that time.
I need to stop looking at other people during that. I, I, what I realized is the tethers don't translate well and I thought someone, uh, did not block a shade when in fact they did. Yeah, you can do a heal earlier with those, but-
Are these AoE?
No, no. Caloric spreads. Caloric. Lark. But yes, where the middle people are standing on right now is the middle of the queue for later. Support. DPS. South. More south rotate. Uh-oh. No, what?
We're good. We're good, we're, we're good, we're good, we're good.
Oh, I'm lagging.
Not so good. Just do what you can.
Well, the good thing about Kaloric is it doesn't matter as long as you don't move.
East-west again.
Oh, gear.
I think I didn't move fast enough, Lim. I think I got you.
Uh, you, you and Nathan have both overlapped me. Skishy, do you have faint up right now? Just out of trickiness.
Yeah, but.
Line up, line up, line up.
Fainting?
Well, that does do damage.
Yeah. There's a two-minute during this?
Yeah. The trigger.
I didn't have, I, I was a zero.
I, I'm.
I was.
Yeah, there was a lot of mess.
I was gonna say, I think someone accidentally took my spot.
Who is?
I didn't have anything, like, at all.
Yeah, that's... Also, uh, remind me, what, did we decide, uh, tank center or healer center?
Uh, uh, the lineups and raid resources, I can't remember, it's off my head.
Hero, you are second from the middle.
Yeah, healer is our second. Oh, right, we did a second from.
Yeah, I would believe I was supposed to go right there. When I went to, when I went to go to my tower, there was already someone else there.
Come on, give me a second.
Yeah, I'm gonna request a quick second to, for me to look at.
I need to check something as well.
The lineup is that one you posted on the 10th, isn't it, Lim?
It's like the last picture of those three resources, yes.
Because if you have zero, you're just supposed to walk up so you know if you're going to the right or to the left.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Twos just kind of vibe and go to the correct color and take note of their debuff. They don't need to look at each other.
Windows Explorer is completely frozen right now.
Oh.
That happens to me on occasion.
It's annoying because I'm trying to check the clip and see something.
Okay, I see, I fucked up.
Yeah, it was a couple people.
Skishy.
What is it?
I will, I will faint, faint the, uh, the phase change, uh, prior to towers. I have it up, I will use it. I did use it that time. I do, if you don't have it. Yeah, the Pangenesis, I believe it is. I'm gonna just go to the nit sheet and put it in there right now. Is that what it's called, Pyro?
Yes, it's called Pangenesis.
Explorer is supposed to be at the bottom. Fuck, where is it?
Uh, I don't know.
Windows E not bringing it up?
I'm trying, I was just looking in Task Manager, but I can't find Explorer.exe.
Um, hit Windows and E and see what happens.
Pyro, is the Pangenesis the one that you have the whole?
Uh, nothing because it's frozen.
Weird. Uh, Ctrl-Swift-Escap?
I mean, again, that just.
That's Task Manager. Should at least show up.
I already have Task Manager open.
Oh. Um, in the run window, if you type in explorer, does it wake up Windows Explorer?
It just opens a new explorer window that immediately freezes.
Um, that Windows Explorer window that is frozen, you should be able to see it in Task Manager under Details, and if you restart that, if you right-click those and do a End Task, just all the way down, they should figure themselves, well, they should close out, and then eventually, once you have none, then it should restart. Uh, in Details, there should be explorer.exe.
Hi, Jaffe.
And when you find it, just nuke it.
I gotta get, I gotta give the cat some food, I'll be right back.
Make sure you move before you have to, you know, step away.
I just cast salsa.
Okay, cool.
Salsa.
What was the key to open a window again?
Windows and E.
Okay, I was afraid of that, it's not working.
But if you'd like to restart, we can.
Uh, I don't want to risk that.
Yeah, it, yeah, might just have to restart Windows and hope that everything's good when it comes back up, but yeah, don't risk it during raid. Uh, if you want to find the files specifically though, in Task Manager, when you have that Run under File/Run, there's a Browse window there, and you can piggyback off that Browse window to find a file and then.
Explorer just started.
Oh.
I know the explorer tends to aggressively try to relaunch itself constantly whenever, uh, it fails, so. Yeah?
I need to remove that one.
I agree. You should remove that one.
And then not un-remove it until Discord figures out what their fucking, uh...
Did you see what their latest feature is?
I don't care.
It's people will play, play a soundboard sound the second they join call now.
So what do you do already?
Just the cat one, yeah.
That fucking killed me. That's good. I don't care, tells you anyways.
It's like 90% of me and Lim's conversations, Ronan. Yeah, I think Lim said that their explorer restarted.
That wasn't what we were waiting on.
Yeah, I was wondering about that. Why aren't we going?
We are.
We are. Yeah, Skishy disminutes.
I just actually want to look at my clip because I was looking at all the two debuffs in my bar and I couldn't swear they were all 20 seconds.
Yeah, I think you should have been up with the, at the tower.
No, it does me. I had short dark and I realized, but I'm like, I think I'm on the light side and it was.
East west.
Haven't had this one in a while.
I'm stupid. Hold on a minute.
Oh, harvest, Ronan.
Donut. Uh, I don't think it matters. I think we're gonna get an extra one when we restart.
This one.
Yeah, this one has an express. Just need to remember the raid wide after.
My heart of light to get, so it should be fine.
Oh, you're right on, stupid.
Rupro. It's been real gamers, violating them.
Did the whole house just shake?
Yeah, I felt that.
Is that thunder for chance?
I don't know, I don't care. Yellow stone.
Yellow stone.
Took it long enough. God!
Christ.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm literally, I'm looking at my clip and every two debuff has the same timer.
What?
Aren't they supposed to be 16 and 20?
There has to be 16 and 20s, yes, because they're supposed to be shorts.
There was a 16 and 20 on my screen, towards the lights and darts.
I checked my clip and it was also 16 and 20.
I have my stream as well.
Lim is cursed.
It could just be you were rez during, it's just something weird happened. What the?
Huh? Oh my god!
No, it's, it's the light and dark debuffs you're looking at. You see how there's nines and thirteens?
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Glad to have that.
Yeah, Lim, you, yeah, it was Lim and Ronan on towers that time. No, wait, it was Lim and Abra on towers that time.
Okay, they gave me one more second early clip just so I can draw this because.
Are you taking that? Go check something else.
No, no, back! What, what was that noise?
Fly and go. It's not gonna take that long. Uh... I'm trying to figure out which color stands out good in the screenshot for this fight, but it's every color, none of them stand out.
Orange. So just as a, just as a, just as a reminder, we aren't doing the lineup positioning like what the thing that Skishy posted. We're doing the one that's in the picture posted above, just.
Yeah, that, that's just where you go forward and backwards.
Okay.
I think we are doing it that way, except you and Ronan are switched or something.
Yeah, no, the, the, the one Skishy posted is only for reference, that zeros go forward and ones go backward, that's it. That's all that means.
Oh, so we're, okay.
And remember, the debuffs you're looking for aren't the ones with like the, the cross-out marker on them.
Yeah, we're looking for the, we're looking for the light and darts that we've been seeing.
You're looking for lights and darts and you're looking for the other one, which is like a lightning bolt or something.
Lightning?
That's how I, I see it.
The ones always end up in the south tower, if I remember correctly. There's the south tower on their perspective side. Uh, for their first, uh, for the second set of towers. I feel like that's correct.
Yeah, yeah, one, one and long take the first. Or the second tower that's opposite the thing, and it's always south. So then when Nathan's back.
I've, I've come back.
Make sure you move or wiggle your.
Oh, there we go. This is approximately what spread should look like for east west. Approximately.
This is for... Okay.
Alright, let's go.
Something that will make healing for ultimate easier after that is to start moving behind the first exiflare, just fumbling it, uh, whether it's north-south or east-west. Obviously, north-south is like slightly befuddling because it's diagonal, but.
I'll be funneling!
Just go to a spot that's adjacent to where you first took the, took the flare, took the, like, the outmark.
Oh, you fool, prepare to die!
You're dead.
My name is Amigo Montoya. Mosquito's been bothering me like all day and I finally destroyed him.
Killed my father.
Good.
I want to find the mosquito with six probiscuses.
Prepare to die.
One smash. Two smash.
Oh, fainting, go off, I don't want to just. Sorry about that. Didn't you bother?
Donut.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Oh. I beep opt, not beep pog, it's, ugh.
No axle at all time for an hour.
The good old reverse bee frog.
Abra was trying to play bop it.
I was trying to get over there as quickly as possible and be like, no, don't do the thing, I'm coming!
I had a massive bop at the arcade the other day.
That's cute.
It was very, very hard. Wow. Hold on, I'm gonna.
Sorry, I, I heard, I heard that's cute and I'm like, it'd be really funny if it got followed up immediately.
You know what you've unleashed.
I really don't.
You'll find out.
Alec coming with a knife.
You're not gonna stab someone, good lord!
You don't have to stab someone with a knife.
I'm a tank, I'm not a someone.
Exactly.
Got you there. A non-entity quickly approaches.
There's right there with my nose and a gold shirt.
Someone's hitbox has entered your room, but you don't see them.
Aggro noise.
Oh, I'm being targeted.
Bravo, Abra.
Uh, my fingers are in a weird position because I'm trying to do, uh, rething as well.
North-south.
Did I just hear Abra say it was trying to do griefing?
I think you're just hearing what you want to hear.
No, no, I'm griefing, I'm always griefing.
I don't want to hear that. Oh, they admitted it.
I focus. I, I don't want to die the wrong color again.
Please, no.
I will try not to mess up, I don't know.
Two-minute window.
I'm clipping.
Heaven's fall!
Kalorik. Support moving first. Yes. Wind south and north-south rotate.
Oh dear.
Oh, that was so far!
I'm sorry, Skishy, just the oh fuck, followed by the flashbang of the century got me good.
My favorite part is the explosion from that feels the need to get your damage down before it kills you.
It's like, hey, you guys fucked up, no shit, we're dead.
I want to give Skishy...
I think I just moved one grid section too far.
Yeah, you moved two, you're only supposed to move one.
I want to give you house arrest, fricking aggravated Christmas all over again.
Aggravated Christmas!
Yeah, because like, when you, when you move as the north, south wind, you start out at four. So it's like you only have a little bit of movement.
I have good news, I figured out where my caloric two spot is. Thank you to whoever puts that place up for murder, because it's the reason I can find out where it is.
And while I was moving, I'm like, yeah, this is too far, but no, I'm supposed to go to this intersection.
No. I remember. Yes, no.
Mother!
Yes?
Hi!
I thought the same thing, Sire.
Hard resting Abra.
I've, I've, I've already done that.
Donut. Ever just got sacrificed?
Two-minute window.
Can I ask you to stop doing that?
Sure!
Lorik.
Get ready.
DPS. North, south. Okay.
Oh.
Mate.
What happened?
Someone got a five.
I think I saw Abby explode, but I don't, I don't think I saw you do anything wrong.
It'd be me.
I think it was someone on the Bravo waymark.
It was Abby.
It was me.
Like stutter stepped at some point here?
I think Abra stutter stepped in the middle if I saw correctly, but I'm not so sure. Did you, Abby?
I think.
Yeah.
It was a blur, so...
I think I saw you.
Yeah, I saw you start walking south and then start walking north, walking north.
Huh. Oh, god, that's...
Look, then move.
Yep, that's tight as fuck.
I know you have the fizz range, but which... No one has fizz range, probably wasn't this mechanic.
Yep.
Yeah, so I was like, I think I saw you, I don't think I saw you doing anything, bro. So I had to listen, I mean...
Looking at the debuff bar like, that's too many fours. Four?
After the first move.
Mother! DPS are going to Bravo. My bad. Let's go in again?
Bro, she's on a Duncan run. Two-minute window.
Alec, watch out!
I'm sorry. I misread, I... I tried to say that.
Raid wide, raid wide, raid wide.
Drop it. Oh, thanks, one's gonna go there. Lorik. Inner side, Abra. Port. DPS. Winds out. After this.
Wait.
First correct counter rotation, let's go.
It was an easy one.
East west.
Oh, when did that happen?
I know.
Happy, I think, at that.
Did you have it?
Okay, here we go.
Line up.
Watch your debuffs, make sure you're looking for the right ones.
This head's careful.
I have, I have it painted.
Sorry, I was so confused, I thought I saw you step back.
I was...
Yeah, I did, and then I saw no one was over here on the left, so I was like, well... This thing's gonna explode right around here.
Well, I thought that you were the other nothing and that you were going to the side that I was supposed to go to, so I was confused, my bad.
Uh, sure, Alec, you should have been with Abra.
Yeah, I realized that shortly after, I apologize.
And I should have been on that dark tower.
Yeah.
Uh, you...
Nooo.
You...
No, I should have been on that dark tower, I should have been west with Nathan.
Uh...
Did I have a long timer then?
No, no, Zora had a short timer. Uh...
Oh, did I have a long timer?
Skishy had a nothing, so... So yeah, Skishy and Zora should have been on the first tower.
I was just confused because I think Nathan had a nothing too, because he stepped back and nothing's go back. No, nothing's go forward! I fucked you then, my bad.
That's okay. Ones, yeah, I was a one, I was a one slash long, but there were no, no slash shorts over on that far left, so I was like, well...
Time to be the hero.
Uh, I did check clip, Ronan. I, I don't know how old that was.
Okay, we go again.
Uh, was I incorrect? I think I might have been incorrect.
Uh...
Two people were certainly not the right spawn.
Okay, so you were long white timer, so you would have been in the second tower on the left, so you would have been on three.
That's where I thought I was, but was I wrong? Well, I mean...
I don't know, I can't see you in my clip.
Okay, I will look at mine.
Who was my buddy on the far right tower? Because they went south. Uh...
We said that.
Alright.
Most recent. That is not most recent in this game. This thing doesn't know how to...
Uh, can we check it later?
I just want to get back to it.
Mm-hmm, I don't get as much time as we can.
Yep.
Well, I'm assuming we're only doing this instance, sorry.
I mean, yeah, there's, yeah, around the time we stopped, it'd be, it'd be nine fifty-one.
Yep.
Speaking of checker food, please stop the firecrackers out.
What?
I don't want to hear that.
Yeah, the guy on the screen on the firecrackers, and he's supposed to be stopped.
Braga? Another Duncan. Duncan doesn't give you the moment of this one.
Baker spells in Geo Centurions. There.
That one has done.
Yeah, we call them munchkins.
Whoa!
Oh, okay!
What a place to die.
I thought I saw someone on my side, I'm sorry.
We are tankless.
My god.
I got one.
Okay.
As always...
I see, we're gonna have...
Yeah, no, just jump in. As always, let them be wrong, do your job.
And if you're worried someone's on your side, just go straight north or south.
Yeah, but you cross through mid, which was a worse case scenario.
Like, if you're on the outer like that, Tate, you can also just go do west because no one's gonna be over there.
Mm-hmm.
My worst case, just taking someone else's spot, or crossing over. Remember... Do your job right and... Don't worry about everyone else.
I'm gonna make everyone void list everyone else for this, I swear.
Uh, you can't do that for the end, because you're, you need to know your tether partner.
Don't worry about that.
I don't know if we're gonna kill it before the soften rage.
No, probably not.
Ah!
Jesus Christ!
Sorry!
Did you lean into your mic, bro?
No, I leaned away!
I think I felt the house shake.
So that's what's been doing it.
What if I'm down their house?
No.
Okay, anyway.
The oven downstairs already scares me.
To be fair, yeah. East west.
Adapt or die.
Are we going to Duncan? Donut!
Hate this.
I don't think this battle is fucking easy.
I feel like Ronan and Skishy are gonna kill me!
Don't worry about other people, whatever's fun. Give yours up.
Oh, they want to clear, they're not gonna kill you, punzies.
It's okay, I'm...
Two-minute window.
Lorik. Port.
Fuck. Yep, it's on the opposite side, there's no way I can... I'll pretend like I can't.
Man, Lily, you got a marathon in there before I killed you.
I didn't have to move.
Yeah.
Also, I keep seeing people do this, if you have the symbol above your head to start caloric, you need to start on the inside. Your AoE almost missed everybody.
I tested it, I don't know if you gave a shit, because it didn't, wouldn't make sense, but you can jump during that, it does not add stacks.
I'll report this to the developers so they can fix it.
Fix.
Dragoons everywhere will help me. Or hate me.
I think Dragoon jumps, can't lose.
Let's just do this fight.
There's Dragoon jumping during the...
I like the mechanic.
During the towers.
I don't, caloric has given me fucking stillness.
Yeah.
Fucking trauma all over again, dude, you haven't even done still this!
No, I mean, just having to stand still, like, the constant threat, if you move an inch, you're gonna fucking wipe the entire weight, that, that's what, that's what gives me the...
Yeah, it makes people pay attention, it's great. I don't want to do that!
Works out.
She run-run on dun-dun?
Works out.
Works out.
That's fine.
I'm alpha Tate.
Two-minute window.
Maybe not the best idea to call the two-minute there.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't know how tight the two-minute windows are.
I mean, it's all good, don't worry about it. Just, uh, don't do it for now, please.
Alright.
Lorik. Port. DPS. Winds out. Alakazam.
Stay. X players.
X players. South.
Three fight. Save Zora.
Random ones, Zora.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good. I'm trying now hard to play this upcoming lineup.
Lineup. Ronan and Zor.
Oh, it was almost hog.
Nathan, did you get a color there, dear?
Good start, good job.
Yeah.
Shit!
So, first tower, okay, sorry. Uh, second set of towers, the third set of towers, when you're going from the set of two to the set of two, if you get a debuff there, you swap.
You need to look at your debuffs because it's completely random who has to move, who has to switch.
If you get a light-dark debuff specifically.
Yeah, it's the light and dark ones.
I don't think there's anything else to gain.
Uh, you get, you get, well, you'll get a debuff for, uh, the merging shit, and that might confuse people, that's all.
Yeah, that's just-
Yeah, I thought you only got one at the start that said you can't merge and then it dropped off.
If you get a color there, you just go diagonal to the other tower.
But yeah, if you get a color, go diagonal.
Otherwise, aren't you supposed to fuse at the second tower if you haven't already and then go to the third one?
The way we do it will automatically fuse people.
Okay.
Yeah, if you just make sure you're standing, when you're in a tower, you're standing by your buddy.
Yeah, as long as you are doing the job based on, or the debuffs, uh, to the correct tower that we assigned for those sorts of things, then everything else will resolve normally.
Yep.
Okay. And you do have to merge with people in the towers, but that's like, as long as you're in the center of the tower, it should be fine.
Woo! I'm hyped, I wanna get back there. Welcome back. Are we good? I wanna go, I wanna go, I wanna go, I'm so excited. It's content.
Nah, I think I was the only one that took us that way, so. Yeah, no, my bad, I I was so distracted looking at, uh, other things, I didn't look at medium buff change. Consume lasagna. I think it does sound really good.
The saga.
Food after raid.
No, food during raid.
You know what I mean.
Well done, Pyro, well done.
Fuckers.
Bites you.
And then it's a zero that gets assigned others, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And then take them north and then far west respectively.
You just take your, your side that you got, uh, put to, basically.
Yep.
Yeah.
If you were the northmost one, remember to stay kind of towards the right so we they can palladium grass.
Yeah.
I'll feel this, and if I scream at you to change sides, like, everybody change sides, not just the-
Yeah, it's a-
You never be on the left side?
Uh, yes.
There's one case, if he needs to do that tower.
If I am a nothing, which has to swap sides for the tower.
Yeah, if you're a nothing and you start on left side.
DPS in Delta, it looks like.
America run-run.
East-west.
Other side, Tate. Let's do it.
Yes, Ronan, it was necessary. Cough that fucking one, so. Run seven circles around it.
Run in circles around you.
Oops. I did Heart of Light a little early, it should be fine though.
It's okay, we already did it a lot.
Works out though. Do you reprisal the upcoming raid ride one?
No.
I trob it.
I'll just not enter reprisal on it.
Can you emit something?
No, it's more like-
Lorik.
It's a good thing nobody plays Samurai, they don't know what I did.
Port. DPS. Be winded out. Okay, it's not gonna punish me. X's coming up. East-west.
Line up! Zero's forward, one's back. They're missing someone. That's frustrating.
Oh, did we just not survive it?
We didn't get heals.
Yeah, we had two or three people die immediately.
Pretty impressive, it just heals.
Let me check.
Yes. We weren't topped off and I only had like one mit.
Oh, god, yeah, uh, like, three people went into that with fifty K HP.
Like, I moved in as soon as the X's were done. It was a little later because of the pattern, but- Yeah, I've been saving my healing for the, just in case we don't get healing off. It's the thing, I used everything, it's weird. Yeah, I'm, the only reason I keep doing this because I have fucking arcane.
Hmm.
Why?
She was supposed to be to keep an eye open after the raid line.
As an aside, just, Liam, I've been shaking the Eclair, or sorry, yeah, shaking the Eclair assist, but then reprising the ultimate afterwards. Did I really not hit you with the last shot position?
You've been doing what, Ronan?
That wouldn't have been enough.
I'm moving things around, I'm making hollows a bit lighter, should cover that just fine, and heal people. I've been faking the Eclair assist, obviously, but then using a reprisal on the ultimate afterwards, are you doing anything specific or? Am I overlapping?
Uh, my, okay, my normal plan is, I re, I Heart of Light, as we're coming out of the mini dimension, I reprisal shapes. I Heart of Light, uh, Pangan is what I'm doing right now, that is all, I believe.
Hmm. Oh. Uh, I know what it was, people weren't, not everyone was mid for my aspect of Helios that gave shields, because the people that died didn't have shields for my, uh, aspect of Helios. Okay. Yeah, everyone that died didn't have shields.
Still, we got about, uh, ten seconds between the raid line and the cat's bath for Helios, just make sure you look at the party HP bar and see if anyone got missed.
There is like one pattern of X's that, like, there's always one person who has to like, run along, like, the north edge of the arena, either near Tate.
Mm-hmm.
Just because of how the pattern works, if we get that pattern. I'm using Blood, uh, Bath every single time I go, it's east-west, I don't go north anywhere.
The X's aren't too much of a problem anymore, the following raid bite is fine, it's just if people miss the staff, just make sure someone's keeping an eye on and throwing an extra heal out. That's it. Just need to make sure if anyone gets missed, they get some extra.
I will delay my Helios two GCDs, I suppose.
Hopefully neutral still up?
Sorry. Donut!
That was, I don't have to-
That was tragic!
Yeah, I watched that, that was-
Me too, it's all good, it's all good.
Putting backflip into the machine.
I gave you style points, Zora.
I didn't see it.
Beautiful, honestly.
See where he is in the arena and like, oh, that.
Hey.
Lorik.
Lorik. Port. Deeps. Winds out.
Come with.
We're good.
Yeah, that one's a, it's shorter than that.
North-south. A what? Pyro.
Raid wide, heals, X, Y, Z. I have that. Remember, there's another big hit coming.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have Lolo.
I am, I'm fainting this, that's all I've got.
Line up. Line up, line up. Pepper. Flop.
Running.
Too late, oh!
Ugh. Right.
I mean, considering the sloppy going into that, I'm surprised it went as well as it did.
Yeah!
Good recovery.
Yeah, the recovery was good.
I fucking hate being, I fucking hate being like short and having to go all the way across the arena. I nearly didn't make that.
Uh, once, once you're two, well, I mean, once you realize you're two, you can literally just conglomerate in middle because you don't have to look at anyone else to know what you're doing.
Yeah.
Uh, so like if you see your two stacks, then you literally just fucking murder in the middle and wait. Yeah. And we can also definitely just tighten up the conga a little bit.
Yeah.
Because I've been starting out like almost damn near past the bugs. Well, definitely past the bugs.
I reminded, I was reminded midway through that poll by glancing at chat that Pyro told everybody there's a 2 minute there.
What?
Pyro typed "there's a 2 minute there" lately. Uh, in chat earlier and I have party chat as an only chat.
Hi, Ronan is rebelling.
You said chat and in my head I was thinking average Twitch chat, like why?
Pyro, why are you in my Twitch chat?
I was so fucking confused.
Pyro's so talented.
Type in a publicly accessible chat.
What are you?
We're having fun. We've been going around the world.
Are you guys playing? Fucking playing tag? Okay.
Freeze tag. Only if you freeze, you fucking die.
L plus ratio plus outside plus playing plus having fun.
Touching grass, son, I've been eating it for years!
Alright, focus.
Always getting that little shape.
Okay. Didn't go south, isn't it?
Yep. Donut!
No way this works, right? Yeah, I bet.
Yeah, no, you're good. I'll explain later. I saw green congregate around the middle one first and I didn't check to make sure they were right, so I just assumed. But then I saw them move and realized.
Oh, sorry, I was standing still for a thingy.
Waiting for it.
Don't worry.
I barely shielded Zora in time.
Yeah, that was funny at times, don't worry about it.
Kalorik.
Kalorik.
Intake. Big woman.
Support. DPS. Winds out after the explosion. North-south rotate.
Come, fool.
I think Abra moved too far.
Abra did move, in fact, move too far. They're on the top right part of the circle.
I... Am upset. That is very strict on feet movement, goddamn.
It's gonna break your, it's gonna break your vet habit of doing that.
I know.
Were you the one, uh, that was like rotating into like DB? What were you?
I went from CD.
Okay, so you, uh, so like... Something that might be of large help because I've been abusing it. Uh, if you are the one that's needing to rotate from north-south, uh... Then you can literally like, I want to take a marker.
You don't just go all the way, you can go like halfway.
But like, if, so like, let's say you rotated from A to B. Uh, one, you don't gotta go to the center of the marker. And two, you can like, kinda just like go there and your stacks will, like, the stack will still overlap. Like, you don't have to go all the way. And you won't overlap the other party on, uh, D.
Hmm, okay.
I would still, but like, basically I just go on the inside of the marker, is what I normally do. Uh... Because you don't, that's where they are centered anyways and if they have the stack, they're not moving anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, here, let me give you an idea for reference. Uh, this is like roughly the sizes when they're exploding, so like Pyro said, you don't have to worry too much about overlap as long as, uh... Everyone is positioned correctly, just, you know, don't get lazy.
Okay.
You don't have to go all the way and you, uh, I still prefer you go away, but like if you don't, uh, if you don't feel comfortable with like your first movement or something, then just go a little bit of the ways, um... And you can always go on the inside of the marker for that one.
You can even be on the outside of the marker.
I need 30 seconds.
Well, that, that's kind of the issue, is keep mark farther than I believe.
Okay, Alec, take the time you need, um...
Yeah.
No, what I mean is if you're on A, then waymarks, like if you're going from Alpha Bravo, you can literally stand there. And nothing will hit you.
Abra went to the other outside.
Yeah, that, that's, I consider that more the inside because he stayed like towards the inside. He went, like, I think it was somewhere like over here-ish versus...
Yeah, no, I... I overextended. I went a little...
I actually see you walk to the middle of D vertically, stop moving and then walk a few more feet to the north side of D.
The double move.
Yeah, unless I see like something's going to not work for some reason that shouldn't happen, uh, I just kinda like plant on the inside of the marker, uh, and call it good. If I'm rotating.
Yep. That is perfectly good.
And if I, also if I see that I'm not a wind from the very beginning, like if I know I'm gonna be one of the ones that's rotating, uh, I don't even go like all the way to the center of the A or C marker. It gives you just a little bit more freedom if you just go onto the inside of the markers exclusively.
Hmm.
Uh, you can even do that with wind because it doesn't take up your total movement. You just gotta make sure you move to your final destination afterwards.
Okay.
Yeah, inside of markers is pretty much always good. You can always do inside of markers.
How could you, my kinky?
You're kinky.
Guess she's gonna get a cake in your mail, and in the mail, there's gonna be icing that's so sorry about your parts.
The cakes in the mail are kinda cool. They come with like dry ice to keep you cool during shipping.
Sick.
Actually, I like the dry ice holding the cakes a few episodes.
Huh?
It's delicious!
The dry ice will have frosting.
You don't eat it, but...
Watch rent, well, you don't.
Alright, focus, focus.
Down though. Donut?
No.
Oh, it's a question mark.
Abra, please, that was really loud.
Sorry! This girl just thinks about donuts! Same, girl, same!
Focus, please. Every time I dodge noise, I fear for my life.
Fair.
I'll start.
That one's escaped, but for some reason. Kalorik?
He's not collapsing, almost.
Port.
E.
DPS.
Oh, fuck.
Thank you, Lem.
Oh, rip.
I don't know why I thought I saw the debuff.
Getting out my gavel.
Jump if you have to.
Getting out my gavel, so you're gonna send my Abra to watching bots.
Me cutting off my middle finger and sending it in the mail.
What fuck, what bloody finger? What bloody finger?
The hell is this a ref? Whatever.
Assylvania.
Oh.
I shot, bro.
I go.
I agree.
What's up?
Ha! Jesus fucking Christ! Jiffy. Baggedy.
North-south.
I look forward to when we get east-west. Thank you, Lem! Christmas came early.
Focus.
Kalorik?
No, it's... Not yet, pet.
Oh, okay. Sorry, this thing cluster...
But do feel free to gently spread out a little and not immediately collapse.
This cluster just kinda goes over my head because I don't do anything for it.
I wish it was close. Port. DPS. Wind out. Then, here comes X players. East west.
Bonus healing out.
They're ready for the lineup for towers.
Here comes the lineup. Here comes the drop.
Zeros forward, ones back.
Pretty sure I just fucked this all up.
Nope, I didn't. Uh, no, you did.
I did?
I think it was me, I fucked this all up.
Uh, we had 5 people on this side, somebody fucked this up.
Hang on.
I think it was me. I know, I had 2 people in my tower, but I was the one, so...
Did you have the long timer, Skashi?
I was long dark, I should have been west.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, I was, I thought, I think I was short and I was supposed to be, uh...
That's okay, we got it figured out.
Yep. It's okay, we are getting practice. Did you just throw a pregnancy test at me?
No.
I thought you knew.
You guy!
I don't think he was talking.
Context fun dip, there.
I figured it was fun dip, yeah.
Fucking walk into a raid and be like, "She can't hit me, I'm pregnant."
I hate this astral redesign, it fucking sucks.
Astral reading, you old... Just kidding, yes you will.
Fucking Uriah and Jay pulling out the card, "You're pregnant."
I was over here writing my fucking OC lore phone, man.
I remember the worst Tumblr post, I'm not gonna say it, we need to go over it.
Oh no! Tell me later.
Wipe the tears out of your eyes.
I cry for the kingdom every day. Lose stealth up.
Donut again.
Stop! It's making me giggle like a fucking schoolgirl.
This is resistance training.
Resist these.
B-Pog Arby's.
Tank Buster?
Ah, the shade. I got my Delta step on. Lorik? Port? D P S?
Oh, well, I've killed us all, I'm sorry.
Someone in my Twitch chat's congratulating who's ever pregnant.
Oh my god, shut up.
I'm sending Cyanics waves to give Socks pregnancy cramps. I will not elaborate.
Okay. I'm sure I was pregnant. This year, honest.
I heard that wrong?
Oh, god damn it, I put my toes in the water too close. Hi, Herb!
Lorik?
What?
We need a buff now, immediately.
In the middle, get him in the middle.
Thanks.
You can walk in time, it's okay. We're good. Port? D P S?
God damn it!
My god!
What was funny?
In that case, if Zora was supposed to go to Africa...
Uh, yeah, Zora would've gone south.
They both walked north and it fucking...
Because our group is start Delta and then go like upwards.
Delta, uh, delta counterclockwise, V C B A.
Mm-hmm.
I fucking love you guys!
It doesn't happen much, you just need to know it when...
Yeah.
Most of the time, you can wing it and get away with it, but not always.
Yeah. I did see what the bulls did, it was pretty cute, yeah.
And if for whatever reason, like you don't know where to go, just like pick something very early and call it, so the other guy knows.
I did that, and then I got yelled at.
Then I take...
You apologize, but you didn't wipe us.
I think I took the auto from that.
Wait, did you? I don't...
I think I told Abra that that shouldn't be necessary because you should only have one spot to go, which I've realized now is not correct, so sorry about that.
I mean, if you're going by like the clockwise, counterclockwise, there's always only one spot that you should be in, but...
I'm still right, I unapologize now.
Can't take that back, it's mine now.
Yeah, if you're, if you're blanking on your priority, you can do that.
You also don't need to wait for the call once you see the support people move.
Yeah, I'm mostly just saying it to help people remember.
Like if you see two supports move, then it's your turn.
Don't worry, I got back.
Well, you need to practice for Kalorik.
Yeah.
The middle doesn't kill anyone, it's fine.
While moving. If you, there's a saw trap attached to your shoes.
Woo! Donut.
How close can I get?
I'm gonna fucking kill you!
Love of all that is ultimate.
Which is gonna be everything when we die here in a few minutes.
Good luck, Abra, Skishy. Tank Buster?
I don't know where. Lorik? Port? D P S? Uh-oh.
Uh-oh?
Keep going, keep going.
We're good.
North, south rotate. Okay.
Did you move perhaps a point later?
Did you see someone? Save Ronan, save Ronan!
Save Ronan!
North, south?
Oh! Oh!
I got two.
Two people.
Hard raise, you got some shit. I got the ults, though.
I got double raised.
Line up?
I should be up in time, but...
I have...
You got health?
Okay, yeah, that's sad.
Yeah, that was... Pressed as many instances as I could there.
Like I don't know if I moved too fast, but that, that friggin flare hit so hard.
Yeah, it hits really hard.
I don't know if it's something, but I literally had 10% HP left.
Yeah, me, me and Skishy both went down to about 10K.
Yeah, I noticed, and someone else...
I got, I went down.
To be aware of, I don't believe the platform is a square, so north and south, you are closer to the proximities, I believe.
That might be true, yeah.
I could be mistaken, but...
That's okay, Zora. Alright.
Uh, they should be like spread enough that if you're like north, south, it should be fine.
Yeah, I'm just saying like if you're a little bit in, I believe north, south is more dangerous than east-west because the, uh, proximities are closer to north, south, uh, relative to than the east-west pattern.
Yeah, the arena's a rectangle, that makes sense.
Triple double check that you're right up next to it, then, I guess, next to the wall.
Get in the funny triangle behind the X flare.
Alright, Skishy, I'm gonna keep making our pots.
Okay.
Alright, oh, you guys have a wonderful night. Hi!
Oh, Lem. Terrible Tumblr post?
Oh.
I wanna know what it is!
I'll just type it to you, it's kinda personal, I wouldn't say it.
Okay.
Oh.
Hmm, alright, I'm gonna disappear. Y'all have a good one. Study for Monday.
I will at some point. I gotta work with every single fucking night between now and then, and then the day off.
Alright.
I don't...
Bye!
I don't, uh...
Alright, well that was fun. Let's pop in a Settlemoon really quick and just say hi before we disappear. Ah, you have to wake up the moon. The moon's asleep. There we go. Now we get the sky back, we see all the fun friends we've got. Here's Catalyst, which is kind of like the player character, but I... Oh, that's a lot of money for that, but that's a lot of them. There's also a lot of little friends that I found. And you can add them in as well. Very cute. It's very nice. Very cute game. And what's available as a quest? Both of these are open, which means they haven't been taken. Uh, pirates. Pirates give leather and bombs, so that's what we're looking for. Ah, wait. I don't know what you are, but you look cute. Oh, you've got bat wings! Alright, and leather. Both of things are needed for what we have right now. Oh, yeah, very cute. Cool. So this is, you know, your little player. It's this guy right here. And then I have to wait for that to finish, so that way I can put stuff away. Looks like a couple random villagers are showing up, just saying hi. These people will just spawn in as the game goes on. This is just a fun little game. It's a fun little time. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna take them ten icies. They've got icies! Cause those are gonna be useful later for other stuff. They're used for like water-based features, I think. I'm wondering if they're useful for anything else. Looks like it's mainly aesthetic stuff right now. But I'm sure we'll need it for later. There's a lot of things here. But yeah, this is just a fun little idle game, very cute aesthetic. Um, if you like idle games, this is definitely a good game for you. Like, this is just something you can run in the background, come back to it, the world moves in real time. Sometimes you'll find the villages bustling, sometimes everybody, you know, headed out. And then you turn on the stars and everything wakes back up. It's a fun little calm game. It's a nice little way to spend some time and relax. You know, Settlemoon is $15 on Steam. Buying it supports a bunch of wonderful people. I know friends who are friends with two people on the dev team, and actually, my daily art today, somebody on the dev team said something very nice, they liked it, and it was based off a character I found at Settlemoon, which was, uh, this sneezele. This little sneezele-like bug. I, I drew them. I drew a mage sneezele, and, uh, the developers liked it, and that's cute. Also, the more bugs that are in the town, the more the background music kinda fills out, but because this is like, you know, a game that you can just kinda leave running, you know, you can click on something else and it'll like stop the music. But if you click back in, the music just fades back in, which is nice and calm and cool. Settlemoon's a nice little idle game. It's pretty chill. It's nice, you know? But yeah, that's Settlemoon. Settlemoon's a chill, little fun, fun little adventure, fun little time, fun little side game to keep running on your computer while you do other stuff, and just check back in on and see how the little bugs did. My little character, I stole bits and pieces from things and it looks very Abra-like, so I'm very happy. It also has a bow, cause I like Rangers and ranged classes. But Settlemoon's a fun little game, but that's gonna be where we leave things tonight. Just showing off Settlemoon to y'all really quick. Let's go give someone a raid. You know, uh, who have we not raided? We'll give someone some love, so if you wanna hop in, we are going to get over to, uh, Danbung PNG. Yeah, sure, alright, one second. Yo! What's up? You can open the door? I'm wrapping up now. Okay, it was not me who turned off the oven.
Huh?
It was not me who turned off the oven.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, we'll give a raid to Dan. Dan is a wonderful bunyuri, wonderful bun, wonderful friend, and they are playing a slime rancher too. We're gonna give them some love, but thank you all for being fantastic. Thank you all for being here, and if you want, you know, to just chill and hang with more wonderful people, head on over there and chill, and check out Settlemoon if you're interested too. It's a nice little idle game to just click on things, doesn't really have a failure state, you're just always doing stuff, which is nice. But yeah, y'all have a wonderful night. Y'all stay fantastic, and we'll see you guys next stream. Uh, tomorrow night, looks like it's gonna be D and D, and then we'll do something afterward. Don't know what. We'll see. Or maybe we won't, and we'll just chill and, you know, just do D and D, and we'll do something beforehand. Who knows? We'll kinda play it by ear. But y'all have a wonderful night. If you're new, follow the channel. If not, then, I don't know, hang out, be cool, join the Discord, all that stuff. And if you don't want to, that's perfectly fine. Go away. Have a good night. Take your wonderful self with you. Later!